Without further ado, I'd like to introduce our four panelists who will be speaking for fifteen minutes each. So, our four panelists this evening, first we're gonna have Roy Keane. Roy Keane has traveled a million miles in the forests of the west, working as a conservationist and a forestry consultant. His clients have included many timber companies and mills. Investors like Travelers Insurance, forest owners like the Confederated Tribes of Matild, Collins Pine, the US Army and Nature Conservancy, and many forest managers including the US Forest Service. Roy has tracked industrial forest management in Oregon for thirty years. His current focus is on overcoming Oregon's industrial forests, escalating log and chip exports, and huge timber and harvest tax subsidies. Next, we'll be hearing from Greg Palason. Greg is a journeyman electrician instrument technician. He has over thirty-five years' experience in pulp, paper, and wood products industries specializing in computer-controlled design, installation, and troubleshooting. Past National Steering Council member of the Pulp and Paper Resource Council. The Pulp and Paper Resource Council is a grassroots organization representing the nation's pulp, paper, and solid wood products and other natural resources-based workers. The US Forest Products Industry is vitally important to the nation's economy, employing one million people and ranks among the top ten manufacturers in forty-six states. Members of the PPRC are people dedicated to conserving and protecting the environment while taking into account the economic stability of the workforce and surrounding communities. He's currently the Vice President and Political Director of the Association of Western Pulp and Paper Workers Union. The AWPPW represents workers in Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Utah, California, and Virginia. Following Greg, we will be hearing from Elizabeth Swager. Elizabeth is the Executive Director of Oregon Fair Trade Campaign, statewide coalition of labor, environmental and human rights organizations that work together to stop expansion of NAFTA-style free trade agreements that hurt workers and the environment and to promote a positive vision of international trade. Elizabeth's background includes Direct Sweat Free Northwest, where she led some of the most successful sweat shop-free public procurement campaigns in the nation. She also helped lead a successful union organizing drive and first contact campaign with her coworkers at a previous employer, Free Greek in Portland.
Free Greek.
Free Greek. It actually does say Free Greek up here, just... She is here to talk to us about the impact that free trade agreements have had in Oregon's forests and forest product industry. All right, and then lastly, Paul. Sorry, I did not get all of these down on paper before the presentation this evening. Paul Seimfuegos is Regional Leader of the Community Rights Movement, which works to dismantle corporate constitutional so-called "rights" while enshrining local self-governance based in Portland and travels widely giving talks and workshops and has helped four Oregon communities, including his own, to start community rights ballot initiative campaigns. Nationally, the Community Rights Movement has helped one hundred and fifty-five communities in nine states to successfully ban a variety of harmful but legal corporate activities such as fracking, water withdrawal for bottling, dumping of urban sewage sludge on rural farmland, unsustainable energy development, and much more. Paul will be sharing his ideas about how Newport could ban raw log exports if a majority of local voters supported such a law. And he'll be leading a follow-up introductory workshop tomorrow evening in town for those who want to learn more. Many of Paul's speeches have been broadcast on David Carson Young's nationally syndicated show, Alternative Radio. Paul is a founder of communityrightspdf.org. For more info about Paul's groundbreaking work, visit his website, paulseimfuegos.com. So, Roy, you are our first speaker. And again, I remind you folks to please hold any comments or questions till the end. We're gonna ask all speakers and give them the opportunity to speak first, so, Roy?
You'd rather just stand and hold this mic? I've got five things I wanna tell you briefly about tonight. The first is about your forest. This is a ninety percent forested county, just like the one I live in, Lane County. Then I wanna tell you a little bit about the logging. And I wanna talk to you a little bit about jobs. And then a little bit about exports. And then a little bit about tax subsidies. Just briefly, because we've only got a few minutes. I wanna show you a map. You can see at the bottom, the green, and at the top, the green, that's National Forest. In the middle of that big chunk of white is your town, Newport. So, your forest, because it was close to a natural port, was raided very early by the Barrens of Old. Just as the Coos Bay Forest, just as the forests that were up in parts of Washington. Anywhere there was a natural port, the forest fell very quickly because it was a way to get the logs out. So, don't think this is the first time there's been log exports out of Newport. This has been going on a long time. It's just that now your forest is in the second and third rotations, and the impacts, of course, are greater. So, I want you to notice that, that your forest is not protected by federal land. The Barrens got ahold of this land around these ports way back in the eighteen sixties and eighteen seventies. I wanna talk to you a little bit about logging. For forty years, I've worked in the woods, and I've driven more ridge tops than you can even imagine. And for forty years, I've watched Oregon's forests fall. I've watched the trees get smaller. I've watched the salmon run shrink. I've seen this in my own life. I didn't read this in a book. But I'm also a historian. And I wanna say this, that every forest that has been exported has been depleted. Log exports are the quickest way to deplete a forest. So, I wanna talk a little bit about logging. Two thousand nine, there was about eighty-one million board feet logged out of your county. I'm a data head. This is according to Oregon Department of Forestry. I didn't make these numbers up. Eighty-one million board feet. In two thousand twelve, there was twice that, almost a hundred and seventy million board feet. So, logging more than doubled in your county. Logging went up a hundred and eight percent in Lincoln County. Now, I'm gonna tell you what happened to employment. Now, we've all heard that if we log more, we'll have more jobs. We've heard that if we log more, we'll be prosperous. In two thousand nine, there were four hundred and fifty more jobs in Lincoln County than there are in two thousand twelve. So, logging more than doubled, employment dropped two percent. So much for the myth. So much for the myth that increased logging promotes jobs. Lane County had very much the same effect. Logging went up seventy-five percent, employment dropped two percent. Even the wood products industry dropped. And this, again, is an effect of log exports. Connect the dots. And I wanna tell you a little bit about log exports. It's not just the shipping out of the jobs. When that logging went up in two thousand twelve, that increase in logging, that eighty-seven eighty-seven million more board feet they logged, that created seven square miles more of bare dirt out in your woods. Seven square miles more. That's not the total amount of bare dirt in two thousand twelve. That's the increase in bare dirt from clear cuts, roads, landings, skid trails. Bare dirt runs down into your rivers, it runs down into your streams. So, I heard today that we all live in woodhouses. Not everybody lives in woodhouses. I left my woodhouse early this morning, but I'll tell you what I did all day long, I hydrated, I drank water. Water is the most important resource of your forest. Water, believe me, if you have been in the desert lands like I have, water is holy. It is the one resource you cannot live without. So, think about that, think about those square miles of dirt. So, in talking about fact and figure, again, it's important that we connect the dots. Because really, in order to make a political case, you have to be able to present fact and figure and help people to connect the dots. That's important. I wanna talk now about the idea that log exports are going to create jobs here. And I wanna mention that after driving around today and driving up Southwest Moore Drive and driving over to the Marine Science, where my wife's dad worked when he was a marine biologist, and driving up into your water reservoirs, I drove all the way up to the gated roads at the end of the Big Creek Reservoirs. And I wanna say this about log exports. The few jobs that are gonna be created, the dozen jobs, plus or minus, direct jobs that are gonna be created, are not going to be worth the damage to the economy of this town. It's not a good trade. It's just simply not a good trade. And I looked at that street, Moore, and I noticed it's a tsunami relief and an earthquake relief route. And a log ship holds about four million feet, plus or minus. They sit down low in the water, they're redesigned. You know how many truckloads four million feet is? It's about eight hundred truckloads. It's about eight hundred truckloads at five thousand feet a truck to fill an export ship carrying four something million feet. That's a lot of truck traffic. It's gonna depreciate some real estate. It's gonna take away from life enjoyment now. The log exports wouldn't be as bad if that was all it was, is log exports. But along with exports come chips. Now, in two thousand nine, there was about seven hundred million feet, plus or minus, exported out of Oregon. This year, they're still closing out two thousand twelve, they're still calculating. It's difficult, because there's a lot of ports. But it looks like it might hit one point two, one point three million feet, or billion, excuse me, billion feet. That's a big increase in log exports. That's why there's no job increase with all the increase in logging. That's a direct cause. At the same time, you have to think about chips. And you have to think about Japan shutting down their nuclear program and buying chips for fuel. And their paper companies starting to buy chips for fuel. That's gonna be the next big, big thing over there to power their grid. Well, where are those chips gonna come from? And how old does a forest have to be before you chip it? Not very old. So, you can see where this heads. The trees get smaller, the exports increase, and pretty soon the forest just starts dwindling. And pretty soon, you look around and you see a whole county like the one my wife grew up in, a whole region, doesn't even look like a forest, looks like a big fiber farm. And what makes this possible? Huge tax subsidies. So, I went into your assessor's page, and I pulled up some information. Your assessor does a good job of giving you some information. Out of the ten largest taxpayers in this county, four of them are forest owners. But if you add the agricultural and forest taxes together in this county, you only come up with about four point seven percent. So, just doing some rough figuring, I figured the forest industry, even though they're the big owners of this county, they're only paying about three percent of the property tax. Guess who pays the rest? Residential, seventy percent. Commercial, about fifteen percent. Multifamily, about four or five percent. Eighty-seven percent of your taxes are being paid for by most of the people in this room that own businesses or homes or live in condominiums in this, in this town. That's who pays the taxes. If you think about who pays taxes? The forest industry in Oregon, every year, this year, this last year, got a half billion dollars exemption, a half a billion dollars exemption on the value of their standing timber in western Oregon. And for that exemption, they were supposed to take care of water and fisheries and so forth and so on. And jobs, don't forget domestic jobs. Part of that exemption was given to domestic job creation. So, where does that money go? Where did it go? What good is that exemption? The result of that exemption, and I'm gonna leave you with this closing thought, the result of that one single exemption, and there are many others, especially for owners of over five thousand acres, the result is that it shifted a hundred million more in property taxes to all of us that own homes and businesses. So, there's a thought for you. Don't we have a saying, if you play, you bang or something? Where is this all going? Thank you.
Well, good evening. I think it's great to see a number of people here. I wanna take just a few minutes and give you an overview on the pulp and paper industry. Use recovered waste paper as an example of some of the impacts of the industry. Talk a little bit about taxes.
Are folks able to hear him okay?
Trade and economic policies, and then along with trade adjustment assistance. So, I do wanna ask you a question. Is there anybody in the room who has not used paper products in the last two days? Serious, wow, that's amazing. That's right. And I get very frustrated, and I've worked with a lot of groups and have for a long time, get very frustrated on people that have or want zero-cut tolerance on trees or who knows what, right? Because we all end up using the products. We need the manufactured products in the United States. For the pulp and paper industry, we have fewer mills in converting operations, sawmills, plywood mills, than we've had in the past seventy-five years. The biggest reason, multinational corporations that have continued to expand and investment in locations not in the United States. Mostly in Asia, but also South America. Give you a quick example. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Blue Heron Paper Mill in Oregon City, Oregon, just outside of Portland. That mill retooled, was state-of-the-art mill, and ran one hundred percent recovered waste paper. And Portland's known as a great city for recovered waste paper. That mill never survived, it's closed. It was the oldest mill west of the Mississippi. In two thousand and one, China was allowed into the World Trade Organization as a developing nation status, which is unbelievable in my mind. And exports of waste paper to China soared, while overall exports of paper and other products from the US plummeted. Believe it or not, waste paper is now the largest single export of any paper products the United States produces. In fact, exports of pulp and, or of recovered waste paper, recycled waste paper, runs seventy percent of what we recover is exported, most of it to China. Chinese firms can afford to pay more than anyone else, in part because they're heavily subsidized by their government, but they also have poor substandard labor, you know, standards, environmental standards, and safety, and just everything that, the rules and laws that we pass here that many of us support and believe in. Now, although that Blue Heron Paper Mill had a backlog for a year, they had customers lined up that were wanting, and they made the food-grade papers and different things. When they filed bankruptcy, people were scrambling, wanting them to stay there. They couldn't survive. From two thousand and two until two thousand and nine, the Chinese government poured over thirty-three billion dollars into the paper industry, heavily subsidized their industry. And with the help of these illegal subsidies, China, as I said, now produces more paper products than anybody in the world. And the US now, as I said, exports more recovered waste paper than any product we made, which is unbelievable. And like most all mills that have closed up and down the West Coast, the Blue Heron equipment out of that mill has been dismantled, shipped overseas, reassembled, brought back online, and is producing the same products that we made here. Nobody'd run a business that way, would you? Let's run a country that way, not business. So, and that's just one example, but let me give you a couple of other quick examples. Warehouse North Bend Mill that was there, closed, it was sent to Taiwan. Boise, in St. Helens, Oregon, the pulp mill closed. They're bringing in pulp from Brazil. There's still a couple, or one paper machine running, they're gonna restart another one. But they still have had a lot of job loss. International Paper, the mill in Albany, Oregon, that was, that was one of International Paper's most profitable mills on the West Coast. They closed that one and a mill in Virginia, Franklin, Virginia. Both mills were profitable, we know that, we represent people in the one out here, and the steelworkers represented one back in Virginia, and we know, you know, working with them, it was profitable. The day after International Paper closed both mills, they raised the price they're selling containerboard for, fifteen percent on the East Coast and eighteen percent on the West Coast. It's supply and demand. Buy your competitors, close strategic mills, and drive your profits up. I was electrician instrument tech, computer science out of Warehouse in Longview, Washington. In two thousand and one, they closed part of the mill, and another, two thousand and four, completely on, on copy paper type. Warehouse, like most companies, makes the same announcement they all do. They're closing because they could not compete in the world marketplace. That machine, one of the big machines, had just had a thirty million dollar rebuild. It was state-of-the-art. Every valve, every instrument in the plant site could be tuned and looked at from the computer in an office most anywhere. As we speak today, that, those two huge paper machines are in China. They were purchased by Shandong Paper, producing the same products that we made here. So, they can compete in the world market, obviously. And Warehouse was involved in the business when it started up. And it's not just in Oregon. This has happened throughout the entire United States. Kimberly-Clark and Everett, Washington, closed their large mill this last year, a little over a year and a half ago. And they'd moved most of their operations to South America, Kimberly-Clark has. And again, that was a profitable mill. And the last, and I wanna talk some of the impact and effect on these mills closing. In the last fifteen years, the Trade Adjustment Assistance, TAA, benefits, raise your hand, I'm just curious if people are familiar with those? Trade Adjustment Assistance are federal tax dollars that are set up to where it goes back to the state of the Employment Division. If you lose your job because of unfair foreign competition, or your operations move overseas, or the equipment does, you can go back to school for two years, draw unemployment insurance, you don't have to look for a job while you're doing that, it's retraining. In the last fifteen years, every location where we represent workers has been, where they either completely closed and/or downsized, every location has been approved for Trade Adjustment Assistance. Which means every time one of the pulp or paper mills or converting operations is closed, it's due to our economic policies and the trade policies, failed policies in the United States, which is a shame. And we, as I said, we represent workers throughout a number of states, and we know of no one in a, in a large timeframe that went on to get a job that paid as well, had as good benefits, vacation, pension, medical, whatever, than any better. You'll hear a lot of politicians talk about, you know, how great the trade policies are, we're creating jobs, and for those that don't, we retrain. It's been failed policies. And to give you an example on the taxes and failed policies that are there. There's a federal tax break that the pulp mills have received. You know, pulp, for those of you, maybe I should explain, I don't know how many of you know pulp mills, but you take chips and cook it into paper pulps you can make paper out of, right? There's a byproduct out of that called black liquor. And there was an unintended tax break that had to do with the highway bill, that if you burned biodiesel, you got huge tax breaks for doing this. It passed in two thousand and five. And a number of companies started to add biodiesel to the black liquor, and the black liquor they burned in the boilers to produce steam to use in cogeneration of manufacturing of paper products. So, let me give you an example of that black liquor tax. International Paper alone yielded a significant windfall. Initially, International Paper had reported that they were gonna get about two point one billion dollars from the, from the US Treasury on tax breaks, tax credits. On July nineteenth, two thousand and eleven, they amended their return so that IP didn't owe any taxes whatsoever. Amazing, I think. Now, keep in mind that when this was going on, it wasn't just International Paper, it was a number of the mills. You know, IP, Georgia Pacific, Warehouse, all these mills got these huge tax breaks, claiming that they needed these tax breaks to keep the US industry afloat. Right? So, IP closed, as I said, the Albany Mill and, that they had there, and that used to be Lamont Industries, went to Warehouse, then went to IP. They closed and downsized other operations. During the same time they got these tax breaks, they did, they announced a four billion dollar investment in Indonesia, two billion dollar investment in Russia, they purchased fifteen plant sites in China, and they purchased controlling interest of a paper conglomerate in India. It's, they're scamming people on tax breaks and subsidies and what they're doing. They'll use it in the guise of they're creating jobs. They're taking our tax dollars and reinvesting. So, by giving them tax breaks, we actually helped them leave the United States sooner than later, which is a shame. And I don't know how many of you have seen IP just recently announced the closure of the Cortlandt, Alabama, plant site, where eleven hundred people work. It's a rural community, the impact is terrible. The ripple effect when we lose pulp and paper jobs, fairly conservative estimates are about six to one. For every one job of pulp or paper, you're gonna lose six additional jobs in the area. Now, let me talk a little bit about, and don't get me wrong, but in my opinion, you'll play hell, pardon my French, so to speak, to stop or diminish much on log exports. It's coming off of private lands. It's not state or federal lands. It's private lands, and, you know, we strongly believe in private businesses. So, it's kind of a catch twenty-two. But with, with that said, if, if you wanna help reduce log exports and/or increase jobs in the United States, you have to change the laws. You have to make it to where it's a tax, there's not tax breaks or tax incentives for those logs to leave here, and that there's incentives to have those businesses here. And that's, that's the bottom line. We have, in Washington State, we passed what's called clawback language with taxes. Oregon has a form of it. Give you a quick example. In Washington State, this last year, there was legislation that was passed for tax breaks for biomass. And because it's supposed to create jobs, and so they got the tax breaks. But new language has been passed, and if they don't, if a business doesn't create the jobs and/or they close pulp or paper mills or converting operations, they have to pay the taxes back to the state, to the people who provided them with that tax incentive with some penalty. You know, there's, there's a number of the things that you can do along those. But just, give me a quick example, also understand the impact on, on these logs when they leave. We, as I said, we have fewer mills now than we've had in seventy-five years, yet the mills struggle to get, especially paper mills, struggle to get chips, which is unbelievable, because of the chip exports and the log exports. They struggle. And they have, obviously, negative impact. And then with all of this, keep in mind, when you talk about tax revenue, what, you know, ask yourselves, why are the, why are the states and/or counties broke? We've lost our tax base. Why have we lost our tax base? Tax breaks to the rich, and we've lost our manufacturing jobs. You know, that's where you generate a lot of tax revenue. And so, you know, we need economic and trade policies that don't set up the situation where there's huge incentives for people to make a lot of money on exporting raw materials. For us as a union, we're probably one of the few unions that we, we try to work with a number of groups to help set economic policies to where we minimize log exports, or coal exports, or natural gas exports. Because what we're doing is, we're helping China for the most part and other countries drive us out of business. They're way better capitalists than we are, and those things need to change. And for that, I would recommend, you know, people look up, it's Senator Brown out of Ohio introduced Twenty-First Century Trade Agreements and Market Access Act. Look it up, push your congresspeople to support it. For those of you also, I recommend you look up, and I know Elizabeth's gonna talk about it, the Trans-Pacific Partnership. If that gets passed, you're gonna see huge job loss in manufacturing. It's terrible what's going on. And again, multinational corporations are getting very rich on this. So, it's, it's a tough choice. They're gonna compete and need to compete in the marketplace. So, there has to be an economic reason for those logs not to leave. That's what you have to set up. To set up and try to oppose, you know, passing permits or whatever else, you might stop the log exports or minimize them from here. They're going out somewhere else. That's the bottom line. And with that, I'll end with this. A lot of people, you know, like I said, I've worked with or talked to, are opposed to logging or cutting or whatever else. The earth is round, and we pass, I get very frustrated, our politicians will support and pass strong environmental rules and regulations, logging practices and stuff. But then they'll say, here, sign this trade agreement. You don't have to follow any of those for the most part. So, those rules and regulations that we pass ought to be included in the trade acts that get passed here. Give you a quick example. Illegal logging in South America is estimated at over one billion dollars a year. So, by setting strong standards here and opposing logging or a number of other things on our natural resources, all it does is drive it somewhere else. Give you a quick example with that, and I'll end on this. You know, part of the demand and reason for the increase on logs right now out of the US, Russia, not too long ago, passed where they set high tariffs. Because the Chinese were investing in Russia, they were getting a lot of the logs and moving them and exporting them to China. Russia recognized it. And as I said, Chinese are damn good capitalists. But is that the only thing that should drive what we do for, for our economy? Our rural areas are struggling terribly, and it's because of the job. It's because of the job loss. So, you know, we don't, we, you know, we support as a union tax incentives that help keep businesses here guaranteed on their plan and/or we believe in tariffs. Set tariffs to balance that playing field. I find it interesting, if you want to, if you support, you know, military action against some country that might attack us, you're a great American in some eyes, people's eyes, right? But if you want to protect our country economically, you're a protectionist. We'll fall and we are falling economically long before we fall militarily. Thanks.
First off, I want to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. In particular, I want to thank Bill Montgomery for all of his hard work making this event possible. I want to say just a few things about my background. I come from a working class family. I actually left the country to go study in university in Australia because that was more affordable. I studied international relations, so that worked out well. And I went to India on exchange and during that time I got the opportunity to interview women and children that were working in sweatshops making the clothes that we're wearing today because essentially almost all of the clothes you buy are made in sweatshops. I mention this because I think it's a real indicator of where things are headed. And I think the history of the garment industry and the attack on unions is something that we should learn from because it will be repeated. So after I returned to the States, Charlie touched on this a bit, I worked for an anti-sweatshop campaign and we were successful in passing a policy in the city of Portland that ensured that uniforms for firefighters and police and other public employees are made in an ethical way. And now I work for Oregon Fair Trade Campaign. I've been working with them for years in several capacities. First, as a board member with the Sweat Trade Campaign, then as an organizer, and now as the director. Oregon Fair Trade Campaign is a statewide coalition of labor and community organizations that work together to fight NAFTA-style free trade agreements. Are people in the room familiar with NAFTA? If you can raise your hands. Okay, a good deal, a good deal of you, but I did see some hands stay down. So NAFTA was the first big free trade agreement. It was between the US, Mexico, and Canada. And since NAFTA passed, we have seen over 55,000 trade-related jobs lost. So those are jobs that were either directly offshore or they're jobs that were displaced because of cheap imports coming in, sweatshop goods coming in. And we got that number, 55,000 jobs lost from using petitions certified by the US Labor Department. So these are people's jobs that qualify for Trade Adjustment Assistance, as Greg was describing earlier. So TAA, the TA program is designed to help workers who have lost work as a result of increased imports from or a shift in production to countries that the US has trade agreements with. However, it only shows the data of work sites where someone has actually applied. So the actual number is far, far greater than that. The work that Oregon Fair Trade Campaign does is to advocate for policies that prioritize quality jobs throughout the state and policies that create markets for Oregon products by raising the living standards of countries that we have these trade deals with. We also want policy that enforces consistent standards for labor and environment because that allows Oregon companies to compete on a level playing field. We're not an organization that is against trade. On the contrary, we would really like to see a lot more exports because, you know, that's what creates jobs, right? Unfortunately, under the current trade policy, we've seen just the opposite happen. US, the US trade deficit has skyrocketed from free trade agreements. Before NAFTA, we had a slight surplus with Mexico, meaning that we were exporting a little bit more than we were importing. And now we have a massive trade deficit. And we did have a pretty sizable deficit with China before they entered the WTO, but now it's gargantuan. In the last 20 years, we've seen this country, year after year, buying considerably more than we're selling. And, you know, what does that mean if we're not selling anything? It means huge job losses. We've seen 2.5 million jobs lost to trade after NAFTA passed. So, you know, I'm talking a lot about how free trade agreements have caused job loss and you're probably wondering by now how this relates to raw log exports. Well, so free trade agreements not only directly offshore jobs and, you know, by the way, that's what has killed manufacturing in this country. And it not only increases imports and displaces workers because these products are made in sweatshops, but it also increases the export of natural resources like raw logs. And that's over value-added products like paper, plywood, and other wood products. And those are products that hire workers locally and create jobs here in Oregon. So the number one reason that corporations push for these free trade agreements is because it allows them to ship jobs to anywhere in the world wherever labor is cheapest. And usually that's going to be where it's the lowest wages, the most grueling working conditions, the lowest worker protections, and of course, you know, they're looking for companies where corporations can get away with, you know, huge environmental violations. And there's countries with weaker protections because that means more profits. So this race to the bottom policymaking has resulted in appalling job loss for forest products throughout the state. So this includes jobs in forestry, in lumber, wood products, pulp and paper. Industry employment information from the current employment statistics program provides information, data that shows some of the best measurement of the state and local economies' trends. Its annual employment history data has showed that there's been a decrease of 3,000 jobs in logging, 3,400 jobs in paper manufacturing, and 18,800 jobs in wood product manufacturing between the years 1994 when NAFTA passed and 2012. So it's suggesting an estimate total loss of 25,200 jobs in Oregon's forest product sector over the last 20 years. And by the way, you can find this data on Oregon's Labor Department's website. So if you're interested, you can see me afterward and I'll give you the link. So a comparison of this figure with data from the Labor Department's Trade Adjustment Assistance Program indicates that US trade policies are responsible for the vast majority of forest product jobs lost in Oregon since the mid-1990s. Layoffs in the sector associated with US trade agreements have occurred in at least 70 cities and towns throughout Oregon and affected at least 111 companies throughout Oregon. So the loss of family wage jobs in forest products creates a ripple effect that can be felt throughout entire communities, particularly in rural areas where there's less diverse employment. Companies that were involved in supporting the mills and the factories, once they close, obviously, they lose business. And then the decrease in both consumer and tax dollars circulating in the local economy means that there's going to be a loss of business for a range of retailers, restaurants, service providers, and more. So it really, it goes way beyond just the jobs that you know are lost from trade that get the Trade Adjustment Assistance. So now we're facing a threat of massive job loss with the Trans-Pacific Partnership. This is a trade deal that's been under negotiation since 2010. It includes 12 countries in the Pacific Rim that represent 40% of the total global economy. This is far larger than NAFTA. And this is a trade deal that is being negotiated as a docking agreement, which means that other countries are going to be pressured to join over time. So this is one of the largest free trade agreements ever negotiated. Negotiations on this trade deal are being done completely behind closed doors. So in the three years of negotiations, the negotiator has still refused to tell the public what is being negotiated in our names. And so the people whose livelihoods are going to be impacted by this free trade agreement don't know what's being negotiated for or what's being negotiated away until the trade agreement has already been signed and by that time it's virtually impossible to make changes. At the same time, we have 600 corporate lobbyists that have been given official advisory status, which means that they have not only access to the negotiating texts, they also have the ear of the negotiators. The Trans-Pacific Partnership, you know, it goes far beyond the traditional realm of trade. It would impact everything from family wage jobs, undermining local laws to protect the environment, food and safety regulations, country of origin labeling, access to affordable generic medications, and not surprisingly, it would also increase exports of raw logs. Countries participating in the Trans-Pacific Partnership negotiations are some of the biggest importers of raw logs from Oregon. Last year, Oregon shipped $300 million worth of raw wood to TPP countries. So Japan alone imported $119 million worth of raw wood from Oregon in 2012 compared to China, which is only 66.5 million. And again, eliminating the tariffs, the taxes on these goods is going to mean a substantial increase in log exports. Leaving mills without materials to produce, and that means closures and of course that means job loss. So in closing, Oregon needs trade policies that prioritize good-paying jobs with benefits. But for the last 20 years, corporate-led free trade agreements have only resulted in crippling unemployment. We can't afford to pass another job-killing free trade agreement. That's why I have a call to action. I always have to have a call to action. I would love everyone here to put in a call to Congressman Kurt Schrader and ask him to oppose Fast Track for the Trans-Pacific Partnership. So Fast Track is, I'll just talk about it real quickly. Fast Track is a process that limits Congress's ability to weigh in on the terms of trade. So it would lock in this backdoor negotiating process and allow the executive branch to sign this trade deal before the public sees anything about what it would mean for their access to medicine, their jobs, and then present it to Congress for a take it or leave it vote. So it's very end democratic. We need our congresspeople to oppose this approach and really go over each and every detail of this trade deal so that it works for us. So I urge you to call your representative. You can find on the back table a fact sheet with the number. And I also want to encourage you to go to his town hall meeting and ask him what his position is on Fast Track and the TPP. So that's Sunday, November 10th at noon at the town hall, or city council, sorry. All right, well, thank you very much for giving me a moment of your time.
All right, thank you. All right, last speaker for this panel, at least, is Paul Cienquero.
155 communities have also banned all sorts of activities which the state and federal government insists are fine, safe, and legal, but which local communities across the country are trying to stop. The most famous one these days is fracking. About a dozen communities, including Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, have used our Community Rights Ordinance to ban fracking in their city. Believe it or not, Pittsburgh was going to be fracked with a couple hundred drilling sites. So I want to start my talk by asking you, if you, the people in this room, raise your hand if you would actually like to ban raw log exports from this county. It's about a third, maybe, of the group? And let me know if you would like to, if you wanted to pass a law in this county that required a more sustainable kind of forestry so that we have logging happening generations from now instead of the clearcutting we have today? If you wanted to support a more sustainable logging practice? How many people would like to see a law in this county that would ban large corporations from influencing elections, giving money? That one's more obvious in the group. Lobbying, et cetera. Well, all of these things are actually possible through the Community Rights Movement. Our work is not about a specific yes or no to a certain policy. Our work is about helping local communities to understand that you actually can exercise your inherent right of self-governance at the local level around what it is a majority of you actually wants. So I'm not here to stand in favor or in opposition to raw log export in this community, but we've certainly heard from the other panelists that it's actually not good for the local economy or the state economy, and that's the reading that I've done as well. If, when we look at all of the issues that are crisis for us today, the problem is actually that we, the people, do not have basic decision-making authority over what we want. That's actually the problem. You know, when the vast majority of acres in this county, you know, I was, one of the previous speakers said, there's not much we can do about it in the county because the land is private. Well, I want to correct him. The land is corporate. The land isn't private. And private property is protected by the Constitution. Corporate property is not. The Supreme Court has ruled that corporations have the rights of persons. But as long as we keep conceding and acknowledging that that's legitimate, we're really in trouble. The word corporation doesn't exist anywhere in any of our founding documents. So when we talk about corporate leaders getting a say over, I think somebody said more than 90% of the acreage in this county is corporate? Is that what I heard tonight? Does that sound correct? Yeah? So 90% of the acreage in your county is controlled by not private property but corporate property, which means that under law, because corporations have so many constitutional rights, you actually have a tiny, tiny percentage, not even 1% of the population, you have a tiny percentage of 1%, making land use decisions, all sorts of policy decisions, tax decisions that affect everybody. And I don't think anybody in this country wants to see a situation where the people in this county don't even have basic self-governing authority. Am I right? Wouldn't you like to see the capacity for yourselves in Lincoln County to be able to set policy as the people of this county, as we, the people of this place? The problem is that there are structures of law in place that have been there for more than a century. I'm going to name three kind of obscure structures of law that make it impossible for us to even have that decision-making authority unless we seize it back. And those three things are, one, corporate constitutional rights, which is that for the last 194 years, almost two centuries now, the Supreme Court has been the last 194 years, almost two centuries now, the Supreme Court has been granting one new right to corporations after another as if they were flesh and blood human beings. They've won property rights. They've won contract rights. They've won free speech rights. They've won privacy rights. They've won right to a jury trial. There's even a Montana state legislator right now who's proposing voting rights for corporations, if you can imagine that. The corporations in Montana would get the right to vote. This is a progression that's been going on for 194 years. Most folks first heard of corporate rights when they first heard about the Citizens United Supreme Court decision three years ago. But that's just what I call the icing on the cake of corporate rule. The second one that stops us from having any real self-governing authority is called state preemption. And people need to understand what this means because it's fundamentally illegitimate in a democratic republic. State preemption means that the state government is allowed to tell you, the people of this town, that you can't prohibit unsustainable activity under law if the state considers that activity legal. If the state considers clearcutting normal legal activity in the forest, you can't ban clearcutting. If the state considers GMO agriculture normal agriculture, you can't ban it. If the state considers fracking a perfectly fine way to get natural gas out of the ground, you can't ban it. That's called state preemption. And it fundamentally violates your rights as the citizens of Newport and surrounding communities. And the third thing that you've probably never heard of is called Dillon's Rule, D-I-L-L-O-M apostrophe S. Dillon was this 18th, 1800s, late 1800s judge in Iowa who decided, he just decided out of the blue as a justice in the Iowa courts, that the relationship between state government and local government is like parent to child. But the state government gets to decide everything that local governments are allowed to do and not do. And that if the state government doesn't give you, the people of your community or your elected officials, the right to make policy about X, Y, and Z, that's just the way it is. And there's nothing you can do about it. So corporate rights, state preemption, and Dillon's Rule. Now, there's this movement that's been growing by leaps and bounds around the country. And there's a fledgling group here in Lincoln County that is looking at this as a possible way to start protecting the health and welfare of your community and of the natural environment. And I just want to tell you a little bit about what's been happening. In a county in New Mexico, Mora County, New Mexico, which is a county with very, very little water in northern New Mexico, where fracking was coming, the people of Mora County overwhelmingly supported last year and passed a right to water ordinance that gives them the right to ban, they're recognizing that everybody is going to have the right to water, and so they ban fracking because that violates everyone's right to water. There are four communities in New Hampshire that were trying to stop a major transmission line through their communities from a Quebec, a very unsustainable power production thing going on in Quebec, in Canada. And they defined, they passed a law in all four communities through their annual town meeting last year, the right to a sustainable energy future. These are communities who are sick and tired of the state and federal government not giving us the kind of lawmaking capacity that gives us a sustainable energy path. Because right now, again, we've got coal and oil and natural gas corporations sending oil policy for us. So these four communities passed a right to a sustainable energy future. And they took it very seriously. They came up, as a community of about 1,000 people, they came up with a legal definition of sustainable energy. And then in their lawmaking, they banned anything that violates that definition of sustainable energy. So if it doesn't meet this definition, it's no longer allowed in Sugar Hill, New Hampshire, and three, as I said, Pittsburgh and 11 other communities banned fracking through a community rights perspective. There's a private corporate highway being built across, being proposed to be built across the state of Maine called the East West Highway. It's only going to be for global trade. It's not going to be open to the public. It's going to be owned and managed by giant corporations, if you can imagine that. It's going through dozens of small Maine communities. Sangerville, Maine, just a few months ago, passed the right for the public to have control over public infrastructure, public and private infrastructure in their communities. They're basically saying, "We, the people, are in charge here," and they're pushing back on state power and corporate rights. And I just want to read you the first paragraph of this state's constitution. This is the very first paragraph of the highest law of the land in this state. Article 1, Bill of Rights, Section 1, Natural Rights Inherent in People. "We declare that all power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. And they have at all times a right to alter, reform, or abolish the government in such manner as they may think proper." That's pretty surprising language. It's one of the, the first paragraph of every state constitution is kind of the last remnant of the American Revolution that's still in place in our local lawmaking. So I just want you to think about what it is that you actually want. Because the community rights ordinances which you folks could pass in Newport or in Lincoln County would actually give you the authority to push back on corporate rights, state preemption, and Dillon's Rule and say, not just, "What are we trying to stop?" But what do the people of our county want? What is the vision for the people of this county five, 10, 50, 100 years into the future? What do you, what kind of county do you want your great-grandkids to be living in, in this county? And what we're used to is we're used to thinking that we have no real control. It's supposedly a democratic republic that we live in, but we don't seem to have any real control at the local level. And that's because of these legal structures that are in place. So our movement is pushing back on those legal structures. And when I look at, you know, the issues that you're facing here, you know, I don't know that it's just rerouting a log truck route to get to a port. I don't think that solves the problem. You know, I think that you folks have the right to decide if that's something you want. What is your vision for the economy of this county? And you could actually pass, and there is a local group here that has a very rough first pre-draft of the right to a local sustainable economy ordinance that you could pass at the county level or the city level right here, and you could actually start to define what you want. And it's both an exciting and a potentially scary process because we, the people of local places across this country, really don't think of ourselves as having the smarts or the capacity to come together collectively, democratically, publicly, and figure this stuff out. There's been so much divide and conquer in the culture for so long that we barely know how to talk to each other in public space. But in this state, there's an awful lot of exciting stuff that's starting to happen. For example, in Lane County and Benton County, just east of here, both of them have already filed community rights ordinances that would give them the right to a local food system. And they define what a local food system is. And one of the things that they define out of legal is GMO agriculture. Because neither of those counties in the Willamette Valley want GMO agriculture. They've been fighting very hard, the farmers have been fighting very hard for decades against it. But the state doesn't really care what the farmers want. The feds could care less. Monsanto has corporate constitutional rights. So they're passing, their goal is to pass countywide ballot initiatives in both counties, Lane and Benton, that would strip agricultural corporations of their constitutional rights, which are fundamentally illegitimate in a democratic society, and would ban the kinds of things that violate their right to a local food supply. Josephine County has just, two weeks ago, that's Cave Junction and Grants Pass, two weeks ago, the Community Rights Alliance of Josephine County passed, or filed a ballot initiative that would ban the spraying of pesticides on forest land and farmland by corporations and by government institutions. Again, they're not touching the right of human beings to do something, right? There's rights that are delineated for people. What we're trying to get at is that virtually all harms going on in this country come from giant corporations, and the corporate leaders behind the corporate veil have profound decision-making authority to try to challenge our rights. So I just want to, want to leave you with a brief quote from somebody that I have worked with for years that talks about kind of who are we and what do we deserve and what do we want? She says, "We're fed up with behaving like subordinates, content to influence the decisions of corporate boards and the corporate class. Having influence is valuable, but influencing is not deciding. We're weary of waging long, hard battles simply for the right to know. Knowing is critical, but knowing is not deciding. We're tired of exercising our right to dissent as the be-all and end-all. Dissent is vital, but dissenting is not deciding. Influencing, knowing, dissenting, participating, all are important to a democratic life, but not one of them carries with it the authority to decide, the power to be in charge." So I guess, I just want to leave you with the possibility that your community could actually create a public process where you decide, is a raw log export terminal what you want? What is your larger vision for a sustainable economy that uses the natural wood products that you have here but does so in a much longer-term, sustainable way? What would that look like as a ballot initiative for you folks to pass? I'm leading a workshop, an introduction to the Community Rights Movement, tomorrow in your Visual Arts Center from 6:30 to 8:30 on the waterfront, and would love to see a few of you there. And thank you very much.
So I'd like for these folks to provide a little bit of their perspective on this issue, or at least as much as they're comfortable sharing. We have not, not a whole lot of time here, but I'd like to give these guys at least five or 10 minutes. And also leave these folks as well available here with our other panelists for questions following. So why don't we start? Is there a particular order that you guys?
Joanne.
Joanne, okay.
My name is Joanne Barton. I am serving my second four-year term with Port of Newport as Commissioner. I represent you, if you live in the Port District. I represent everyone who lives in the Port District. I was publicly elected by you. And I would like to say right up front that of all the four speakers that I heard tonight, I have areas of agreement with each of them. I think that there may be some important information that is not really being emphasized that speaks to the port's need and this community's need for increased income by the Port of Newport.
I've got only 10 copies that are excerpted from the Port of Newport's Capital Facilities Plan. The state mandated that all ports in the state of Oregon undergo a strategic planning process and a capital facilities plan process in order to be in compliance with state law and continue to receive state funding. So I'm going to give five to this side of the room and ask you to share with friends. Well, that may be more than five, but there's some for this side of the room. Also, you can go to the Port of Newport's website, www-portofnewport.com. Is that right? It's either .com or .net. And that strategic business plan and the capital facilities plan are both available on the port's website. I think one of the questions that we have to ask ourselves as a community, and as you look at the recommended projects that the Port of Newport needs to undertake in the next foreseeable future, is which one of these projects should we not undertake? Because there are $15 million worth of projects, infrastructure projects, that are expensive and that are necessary and that must be performed for the port to continue to deliver the level of services it does to people, organizations, businesses like the Rogue. $15 million worth of infrastructure projects that the port needs to perform. Not the smallest would be support of our commercial fishing fleet. The port docks are in a deplorable condition. It is an embarrassment to me, as your public representative, that the port's commercial docks have deteriorated into the condition they are now. That has happened over the last 15 to 20 years. Coincidentally, what has also happened over the last 15 to 20 years is the port has not had a significant source of income. Without income, we cannot invest in our infrastructure. I don't know why you're rolling your eyes. I invite you, and I encourage you, to come to port meetings. Everything, I am absolutely insistent, as is the rest of this Board of Commissioners, that what business we conduct, we conduct in public meetings. And the only business we have not conducted in public regarding the log export terminal are contract negotiations, as is allowed by law, and is actually critical not only for the Port of Newport, but for the state, for the city, et cetera. So, you know, I don't know what else to say, other than there is a desperate need at the port for additional income, that is steady and reliable income. The voters of the Port District entrusted us with the $15.4 million bond levy that they were willing to shoulder in order to renovate the international terminal. We have done it at great expense. We have taken out loans. We have gotten grants in addition to the $15.4 million. The facility will probably end up costing around $26 million. We did not go back to the Citizen Port District to ask for additional funds. We've shouldered that burden ourselves because as a commission, we said, "No, we're not going back to that well again." So, you know, at some point, the port will reach its debt limit, and we won't be able to borrow any more money without additional income. So, you know, this is one of those sort of pragmatic decisions. I have a fiduciary duty to you, to the entire district. It's a publicly owned facility, and I'm happy to pass my, to anybody else.
My name's David Jinks. I'm a lifelong resident in Newport, Oregon, Lincoln County. On-again, off-again, Port Commissioner, a couple times. I've learned a lot about the Port of Newport and port facilities and what it takes to operate them over the years as a Port Commissioner. I'm also a lifelong commercial fisherman, small business owner, self-employed my whole life. Understand small business and the aspects of business, what it takes to stay in business. The Port of Newport does a lot of economic development, which is sustainable for this county and for the state of Oregon. We brought a lot of income into the state of Oregon and jobs through economic development. But to support our infrastructure, it takes more than economic development because a lot of the economic development we participate in doesn't have a direct return to the port. And that's what puts us in a serious fault. We need some income. Our tax base is extremely low. So we're put in a position of needing income through more than economic development. Like I said, economic development's a wonderful thing, but it does not put money into the coffers of the port to support the infrastructure. Joanne mentioned the docks and facilities of the port, and they are in disrepair. It's not for the fact that the commercial fleets and fishermen and business owners don't pay rent, they do. But the problem is, is a lot of that fisheries and a lot of the business owners and fish plants, that's all economic development too. Because without them, this economy would go away also. So we need to support that. So as we look for other ways to do it. And, you know, you look at this Newport, you know, it's a port, always has been. In the early '70s, we went to a real shallow bar, caused a real economic impact for the state of Oregon, so you have Half Field Marine Science Center. It was closed to the use of their research ship. We went to a 23-foot bar because of lack of dredging. Well, now we got it back. It's very important to this fleet, extremely important, that dredging stays the way it is, is that we keep this a de-draft harbor because of the economic development that this fleet brings into the whole community. It's very important. And so my position here tonight wasn't to come here and talk to you. I'm glad to do it because if you did go for me and you do live in the Port District, I'm here to participate. I was here to listen. I came here as just as the port put on a forum and the city put on a forum to discuss. I came here to learn what I could learn. But one thing I do have to say, I believe it's one of the first speakers, Roy Keane, talked about the trees, the forests, the forest lands. If you grew up in Lincoln County, you did several things. You logged, you fished, you did a lot of things when you were a kid. And back then, we got to start logging when we were really young because there was no labor laws. You got to do whatever you wanted to do. And so, you know, my exposure to the woods when I was a young man was falling trees in the creek beds, yarding, skidding logs down through the creeks, the rivers, rafting them down. Every estuary in this, in the Oregon coast had logged. Every estuary in the Oregon coast had logged huge log rafts, grafted up in them. You know, and I do spend a lot of time in the woods. I go up in the woods. I love the woods, and I've been on the ridge tops. And through ESA, the MSA, the EFH, through all those tools we've used, it's changed the management of forests. It's changed the way we log. It's changed what we do. And we speak about, oh, the big coho runs, we had the big fish runs. You know, a lot of that's environmental. If you understand fisheries, you'll understand that a lot of that's boom and bust with environmental conditions. You have good booms, you have small ones. You know, we do have good fish stocks now. Through the ESA and EFH, Essential Fish Habitat and Dangon Species Act, we're seeing runs come back. We're seeing native runs come back. Now, a lot of this does have to do with the logging practices today, which I can say I think as Oregonians, we should really be proud of that. So that's what I was here tonight for, to listen. I learned some things. I like Joanne. Yeah, I've, you know, I've expanded some of my horizons tonight. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
My name is Cameron Lefalot. I'm the Land Use Director for Oregon Coast Alliance. We're an environmental organization that deals primarily with land use and estuary issues on the Oregon coast, from Astoria to Brookings, technically from the summit of the coast reenchanted beach, but most of the issues are in the coastal arena rather than on the flanks of the coast range. So I want to talk a little bit about the permits required for this proposed Teaven Log Yard. Oregon Coast Alliance doesn't work on issues of log export. It's not really a land use issue. So we have not been participating in any debates, state, federal, or local, about that issue. But we do participate in and have opinions about the proposed dredging expansion permit that the port is seeking. In order for the port, in order for Teaven Log Yard, or any log yard actually, to be built in the area where it's proposed on port lease property, there's two sets of permits that would be needed. Neither of those permits have anything to do with the larger policy question that the first speakers were talking about, which is log exports. The permits aren't about that. The permits are further down the feeding line, so to speak, in terms of what the impacts would be of actually doing this proposal. So one permit that's required is from the city of Newport. Teaven Brothers, under city ordinances, is required, was required, to provide a traffic impact analysis, a TIA, to the city about the traffic impacts of having many log trucks coming to the city on a regular basis as part of this log export facility. So, and the city of Newport had to approve that TIA before they would grant the permit. So Teaven provided a TIA, the city approved it. People in the neighborhood where Southeast Moore Drive is were very concerned about it, because there's a fundamental problem that happened over a 25-year period. It used to be, Southeast Moore Drive has long been the main route to the port from coming off of Highway 20. But for a long time, the port was really moribund. And so the only people who used Southeast Moore Drive were people who were going down to the bayfront. Now the port is coming back to life with the international terminal rebuild. But in the meantime, during all the period where there was not so much activity at the port, that whole Southeast Moore Drive area really changed. The neighborhood got built up. It's a residential area. There's a school, there's the Marquinhos. I'm sure all of you have been down Moore Drive many more times than I have. It's a narrow street, it curves, goes downhill. It's not a good place for log trucks, especially lots of them, which would be noisy, be dangerous. So we have here basically kind of a time capsule tragedy. The neighborhood has changed, the port's come back to life, there's one road for both of them. What really needs to happen here, and Oregon Coast Alliance has been encouraging parties on this, an alternate route needs to be found, created, put together. That requires some political will, because the port, the city, the county, and the neighborhood would have to come together, work up a route, push the Oregon Department of Transportation for funding, which is a complicated thing to do. The Department of Transportation is not a simple agency to deal with, let's just put that up front. But it could be done. And if the port is to thrive and the neighborhood is to thrive, it must be done. So when the city of Newport approved the transportation, the TIA, the Landing Condominiums and Oregon Coast Alliance appealed the decision to the Planning Commission, which also approved it, and then appealed it to the Land Use Board of Appeals, which is the court for land use decisions. The oral argument was last week, and the decision will be handed down by Luba in the next couple of months. The other permits that need to be granted in order for this log export facility to get into place are all concerning the expanded dredging. In order for there to be a log export facility, the port needs to expand the dredging prism.
I just want to clarify that for full load shipments of the log ships that Teaven is proposing to bring in, you're right, there would need to be expanded dredging. For partial shipped loads of logs to be shipped out, there would not be, need to be additional dredging.
Just for clarification. Thanks. So the port has submitted a permit modification for an expanded dredging prism around the new dock to go from 29, 29.2 feet down to 35, with a riprap also to stabilize it afterwards. So that permit modification has to have several agencies granting interlocking permits. There has to be a permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. There has to be a permit from the Oregon Department of State Lands. Both of those permit public processes are currently ongoing. The public comment period has just closed for the Corps of Engineers and for the Department of State Lands, and they will render their decisions on the permits whenever. They don't really have deadlines, but they will do it relatively soon. The third permit concerning the dredging has to come from the Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, which is a state agency also. DEQ has responsibilities under the Federal Clean Water Act. They have to provide what's called a water quality certification. I realize this is all bureaucratic taste, but I didn't invent it. We just have to live in it. So the port has a water quality certification for the original project to take out the paisley, which was an enormous undertaking, and rebalance the Hennepieque, and build a new dock. And by the way, Oregon Coast Alliance supported the taking out of the paisley, the rebalancing of the Hennepieque, and redoing the international terminal. We supported that all the way through. We wrote comments to the agencies about it. We were with the port on that. But we're not with the port on this dredging increase proposal. The port has a water quality certification from DEQ for that original terminal project. They will have to have another new one for this expanded dredging. And it's getting controversial, because there's a lot of impacts to Yaquinta Bay that would happen from this expanded dredging, to the clam communities, to the eelgrass communities, to the whole invertebrate food chain in the bay. Yaquinta Bay is a very rich estuary habitat. And sooner or later, if we keep picking at it in different ways, the estuary is not going to be as fruitful and as rich a set of interlocking habitats as it is now. So the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife is very concerned about this dredging proposal, and so is the National Marine Fisheries Service, which is the federal fisheries agency. So the DEQ's comment period for their water quality certification ends Thursday. And then all of those agencies will be making their decisions about the permits for this dredging expansion proposal. If I didn't confuse you sufficiently, and I've really tried hard to do it, you're welcome to come talk to me afterwards, and I will confuse you further in person.
All right. Maria.
Hi, I'm Maria Soss. I'm Maria Soss, and I'm a member of the SEESO, the Community Rights Group that is forming in this community. So far, the conversation has been, first, it was brought into a higher level by the first four presenters, which is something we desperately needed, to see the problem of the log export project in a wider context. Then we have been coming closer to the specifics of the log export project, and I am going to bring it back out again into the very, very much wider context. That's where my feelings are about it, and they're very strong. This town hall is about discussion of a log export project managed by Hancock Forest Management, a company based in South Windsor, Connecticut. Once implemented, the project will profoundly affect our community, its environment, its quality of life. It is also about seeing our community within the wider context of many other communities in which powerful corporations are implementing projects that benefit them exclusively at the expense of huge, often irreversible, environmental impact. It doesn't matter whether the project is to export raw logs from Newport, to plant genetically-modified crops while contaminating organic crops in Benton County, to commercially extract natural gas within the urban environment of the city of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, or to apply sewage sludge mixed with factory effluence on agricultural land in Packer Township, Pennsylvania, or to extract the water supply of the city of Mount Shasta, California, for the sale of bottled water. It is always a corporation based somewhere far away coming to a community and imposing its will on it at the expense of the community's fundamental environmental resources, its water, air, and soil. The picture we're seeing here repeats itself over and over again. As a nation, we have become incapable of protecting our communities from assault by an immensely wealthy corporate minority that has taken possession of our government and uses it for its own advantage. That minority exerts a powerful influence on our elections through its money, not through its numbers. Afraid to lose its profits, it drafts the bills that will become laws so as to increase its advantage over the will of common citizens. It denies the existence of climate change in a time when we see the effects of that change on a daily basis. Looking no farther than its pockets, it keeps promoting projects that further degrade our environment, no matter how much the temperature of our oceans is rising and its waters are acidifying. We're now at the point where all marine species, from the smallest to the largest, are absorbing more and more mercury, becoming toxic to each other and to us in response to warming of the ocean. The forecast now is that they will not be able to adapt to these conditions and will collapse, leaving an empty, toxic ocean behind them. Temperatures in the Arctic are now higher than they have been during the last 120,000 years. Its ice is melting fast, and the exposed tundra is releasing more and more carbon into the air, accelerating its warming trend. Storms are becoming more extreme and catastrophic, yet corporations still insist on deriving their profits from the same exploitative mode of operation that is exhausting our planet's ability to feed the creatures that live on it as a mountain. Aware of these ominous signs of the threat to persistence of life on this planet, what are we to do? Are we to allow corporations free play at the expense of our ecosystems and of the survival of future generations for the sake of a few jobs? It is time to pause and come up with criteria by which to judge what projects we allow to flourish in our communities and what projects we must reject to protect our ecosystems and the future of our children. It is we who must decide what kind of community we want to have and who must push, and who must push for governments at the local, state, and national levels to work for us and for our well-being with our future and that of succeeding generations in mind. The communities I just mentioned, and many others, are becoming part of a growing national movement organized around a vision of community development that is in harmony with nature, in which development starts from that vision and is kept within it by choice of the people who live in them. Now is the time for us to decide whether we want to have our environment mined by incoming corporations, or whether we want to work together and develop an understanding of what Newport is and what kind of growth would preserve its character and its natural Paul Sin Fuegos is inviting all of us to participate in a workshop he will be holding tomorrow at the Visual Arts Center beginning at 6:30 PM about organizing for a future in which we can grow in harmony with nature and be legally empowered to uphold that vision of development against any corporation that is intent on profiting at the expense of the habitats and ecosystems that surround us and of which we are a part. I encourage you to sign up and find out about a new way to build and preserve healthy, informed, community-like, in which nature to which we owe our very existence is an integral and empowered player. Thank you.
So I think what we're going to do next here is, if you have questions for any of our panelists, if you have those little comment cards, if you could kind of pass them inwards. We have a lot of questions, just hold it up if you have one. Okay, that's actually a little bit limited. So I know some folks have come here tonight to express their feelings, and I think it's important that we provide an opportunity for that. So I'm going to just go over this again, how we're going to do this. Any folks that want to remain up here during this comment period, you may. We're going to do a short comment period, about 15 minutes. So I'm going to give you, a few of you, the opportunity to speak, and then we're going to do questions after that. But then I'll open it back up again for comments, because I want to make sure that all the answers, all the questions are able to be answered. But I do know some people would like to speak, and I think now would be a good time for folks, if you have something that you'd like to say, I'm going to ask, that you hold it to three minutes. Louder.
I just want everybody to know it's a longshore union. It is relevant here tonight, and they're an important part of our community making this discussion, and, you know, somehow that's our community.
Yeah, I think that we can't be blind to the fact that this panel, it was very one-sided on this issue. And this is a, this is an issue that is not going to be solved with each camp in different places. So at the end of the day, I think this is a good starting point, and we did not design this. I think a lot of this was for people to be educated. But this is a good starting point for us to think about the types of dialogues that we need to have moving forward. So I'm encouraging you guys to make the types of comments. It might be a springboard for further discussion with Cameron.
No, I just wanted to ask that since the longshoremen have not spoken, perhaps there's one or two of them who might like to say something specifically from their point of view.
One of you guys like to address, and I'd be happy to give mine. Yale Burdley. All right, this is Yale Burdley. He's International Longshore and Warehouse Union. He's the president, Level 53 here. And so I would like to give him the floor for moving here and speaking.
Thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for recognizing us.
Close to the mic.
I think there's some messages that are maybe being missed here tonight. I know the port let you know about, you know, their needs for funds to keep other developments and things that they have to do going forward. The Port of Newport has been a shipping port and a deep draft port for decades. Mr. Keen pointed out quite gracefully that what's going on in Lincoln County right now is not working. He pointed out in between 2009 and 2012, that we had a net loss of 450 jobs. Does that sound like a working economy that's going in the right direction? Not to me. He blamed logging for that. The fact is, it's because our port wasn't in operation that those jobs that would go for exporting the timber that was sawn in Lincoln County went to another port. That's why. The jobs weren't created here, so we did not get the benefits here. The port did not get the revenue here. The port stands to gain several hundred thousand... The port stands to gain several hundred thousand dollars a year that they can put in infrastructure that supports tourism, that supports sport fishermen, that supports the commercial fishing fleet, that are all valuable parts of our economy. And yet, the port has no source for those revenues. How long can they continue to operate on a shoestring? They've done a fantastic job, I gotta tell you. I go to port meetings, I've been to a report meeting for the last seven or eight years, and they are doing a fantastic job with what they have, but they're, they're not, they're not gaining any ground. If we don't keep this a deep draft port, the fact is, other ports have lost their dredging, which limits the bar crossing, makes it unsafe for fishing fleets across the bar, makes it unsafe for research vessels across the bar. So, how much development will we have if we lose deep draft shipping? Because the dredging that goes on the bar, the maintenance storage is, is based on commerce and cargo, not on fishing fleets, not on research vessels. You can, you can verify that with Army Corps engineers. So, what it really comes down to for me is what benefits us here locally, okay? The free trade agreements, we agree with. The ILW is part of the Oregon Fair Trade Organization that's going on, that's working against the free trade agreements. We do agree. We believe the port of Newport with its open international terminal can benefit the AWP PW mill in Toleda. Local 13, I believe, has also supported that terminal to be opened for the, for the help that it could possibly create and maintain their jobs that they have, make that mill more competitive, so it doesn't become another one of those mills that shut down and the jobs are lost. Think about those. Think about our fishing fleet, not having, you know, fishing plants in the livery. People are talking about truck traffic on John Moore Road. Very few people realize that that is the bypass route. Trucks used to go to the international terminal, down Bay Boulevard, then a bypass route built, Moore Road. Soon as it was built, development started. The school is no longer there. There is still a school grounds there owned by the school, but it's not present there. There is softball games played there, but the school is not in operation, it is not a school zone. I went to school there. I've lived here fifty-three years. When I went to school, there was no chain link fence to keep us out of the road, but there were trucks going up and down the road to the international terminal, and a lot got killed, no families were killed by trucks. So, it's been in existence forever. The Embarcadero was built there during major shipping times. The people that invested their money to build there, shipping didn't bother them, they built right next to it. So, to say it won't work because there's trucks on the road, I, I really have a difficulty with that. What's, what's our biggest destination condominium in Lincoln County? World Market in Epo Bay. What's right next to World Market in Epo Bay? Highway 101. There are garbage trucks, jet trucks, log trucks, lumber trucks, paper trucks, you name it, kinds of trucks that go flying by there at a higher rate of speed twenty-four hours a day, but yeah, it's the most popular condo.
Excuse me, excuse me, please. You have your opportunity to speak.
They are living there. So, why is it so popular? Go to yachts, there's houses built literally five feet from Highway 101, so to say it can't coexist at all. Hatfield Marine Science Center was built and started during shipping, so it just proves that they can work together. And I think what, what we need in a community conversation isn't about stop the port from doing this, or stop the fishermen from doing that, or, or stop things. I think it, we come together to discuss how we can do it the best to benefit, I mean, the greater majority of our community. That means supporting sport fishermen that come here. That means supporting the commercial fishing fleet. It means supporting the port in their efforts to bring deep draft shipping and trade to the community, because that's gonna bring more people to work. I would like to take, you know, there was, there was a thing that was made that said ninety percent of our timberland in Lincoln County is owned by corporations. I hate to tell the fellow this, but there are hundreds of small, private timberland owners in Lincoln County that own timber that would like to export it, because, but their, their tree harvests are so small that by the time they pay loggers, truckers, everything to harvest it, they literally, by the time they get it to a market, by the way, we have no mills here, by the time they get it to market, there's no profit left, so the trees just stand. They can't, they can't harvest, they can't replant, they can't manage, they can't do anything, because they have no market to take it to. So, there's a lot of information that's being thrown out there, there's a lot of accusations that are being made, there's talk about a bypass. The bypass will be created by a joint community effort once shipping is brought back to Yucuna Bay, because you know, and I know, the state, federal government, nobody funds something on a maybe. They're not gonna say, well, the port of Newport might get something going there, so we need to build bypass routes for it. What they're gonna say is, show us a need. The port of Newport's got a shipping terminal there that's very busy, we need a bypass route. And so, it's gonna take a community group of people to get a bypass route built. That's what it's gonna really take. So, and a few, a couple dozen jobs, I think of, in 1991, Oregon State University did a study, and they did, they did, they wrote a paper about log exports, and they, they wrote that paper based on the controversy about, the same one we're having, that should be exported, should we manage, should we obstruct, should we limit, should we ban? There's a whole, it's a sixteen-page article, I urge you to go online, look it up. They talk about the benefits to small ports, they talk about benefits to the port, they talk about small coastal communities, job creation. In that article, they say export timber creates about 1.3 jobs per million feet of logs exported. Sawn timber in today's modern sawmills, now that's a 1991 modern sawmill, so you gotta imagine, with technology as it is today, it's better than that, but modern sawmills create 1.7 jobs per million feet exported. Okay, so if you take, say, Teeman Brothers estimates roughly fifty to sixty million feet a year, that's about eighty family wage jobs at 1.3 per million feet that they plan to export. So, for instance, if that same sixty million feet is not cut, it won't be sawn in Lincoln County, so our net gain, if all that wood went to be manufactured someplace else, sawn in the lumber, it would create 1.7 jobs someplace else, rather than 1.3 jobs here. So, we don't have any sawmills. And so, unless there's somebody out there that's gonna majorly invest in new mechanized sawmills, we're not gonna create jobs here with our timber. Other communities are gonna continue, continue to reap the benefits of exporting. And what's gonna happen is, our bayfront's gonna dry up, because the fishing fleet isn't gonna get their docks maintained, they're gonna get tired, they're gonna be able, they're gonna get to the point where they cannot operate. The channel will shallow in, Dave Jakes pointed out, it's done it before, it'll do it again. Guess what? As it, as it, as it showers up, you're gonna lose passage, you're gonna lose fishing boats, you're gonna lose marine sciences, person, you're gonna lose fish plants, person, it's gonna dry up, you're not gonna have a maintained channel. Is that what we want for our community, is that what we want for Lincoln County? Is that what we want? I don't think so. My family's been here for a long, long time, and I wanna see it through. I wanna see everybody.
Yeah, thank you very much, that was a much-needed perspective and balance. I think there's a couple folks here that need to make a disclaimer.
Yeah, I just, I just want you to be clear. You know, for the information and the things I talked about tonight, our union, the AWP W, and our workforce supports the port, and, and, just to make a quick comment, look it up, Eureka, California, we went through something similar down there. The pulp mill closed, people were scrambling, what do you do for the port? The impact of the pulp mill closing had negative impact to that port. That port goes away, there were a thousand trucks carrying gasoline per year increase through the redwoods, it sets up terrible environmental issues. Don't, don't get me wrong, in my opinion, the issue you face is the same and similar to most every community in the United States. It's the federal government, the trade policies that are setting up so that we don't have the bills here. They set it up so that the logs are exported, our natural resources are exported. So, understand, you know, we believe, and, and believe you need a port. Everything that, that he just talked about, we agree with. You, you gotta have that infrastructure, it's not just one issue, it'd be great to have a utopia where, you know, we didn't have all this, but the fact of the matter is, you have to have commerce, you need the tax base, and that's what's there. So, I wanna make sure you clearly understand, we support the port, we have issues with trade agreements and the export of our log materials that can have a negative impact on our mills, that's where we're at.
Did you want to make sure you have time for people to speak?
Yeah, so our coalition has a longstanding stance on supporting value-added job creation and policies that help create that, as opposed to shipping off raw materials. Our coalition doesn't have a position on the log export terminal. It's not something we've pulled our members on. My guess is that we'd have coalition members that would support it and coalition members that would oppose it. So, that being said, you know, I, I think that that's the nature of coalition work, you know, take a bunch of different organizations with sometimes opposing viewpoints, and work on what you can, you can build together, what you can fight together, and that's how you win. And, you know, this is what I can tell you, is that if the trans-Pacific partnership moves forward, we're all going to lose, so I'll leave it with that.
Okay, now...
Have you got any thoughts on that? And was there any hot spots found as far as the cameras in those areas? We only have one spot that was found, and that was the two, the three of those pilings that were removed, and we'd already removed, exited that, and the first one that was talked about.
Right, and that's my understanding also, there were not any toxic hot spots in Yucuna Bay. It was, there was kind of a breath-holding moment when the paisley was taken out to see if there was nasty, icky, blech under the, where the paisley had been for the last half-century more or less, and there weren't, so that was really good. The paisley's out and all its bunkers, sea oil, and other nightmarish things are gone. The Hennebeak was completely scrubbed and cleaned and rebalasted, and so, it's basically a concrete hull full of nice clean sand, and there, and there weren't any other toxic hot spots that anybody is aware of.
So, just to clarify, sixteen thousand yards, sixteen hundred dump, dump trucks full of material, just to put that in perspective, we're talking sixteen hundred ten-yard dump trucks.
The disposal site is on the main point. And, and let me add one other thing, in addition to the dredging increase that the port has requested, there's also an undetermined amount of annual maintenance dredging, or, not annual necessarily, but regular maintenance dredging that would also have to occur to maintain the depth once it's initially taken up, and I don't know, I haven't seen anything from the port that says exactly what that's going to be, that there is a maintenance dredging component. Commissioner?
We've found over the years, over twenty years, we did a study on this, and even in the drilling basin, that's a high scouring area, and that there will be probably required no maintenance dredging.
Not at all?
No, because it's a high final scouring area, and so, that's what we've found in the past, and from the dredgs samples and the surveys we've done, this area's been highly studied. Climb studies have been done, test holes drilled, depth measurements have been done, I mean, it's, it has been measured, looked at, and, you know, as a, as a general fisherman, there's no elografts in this area.
The area you're talking about?
Yeah, the area we're talking about.
You mean in the, in the increased dredge?
Yes, there's no elografts. And the gaping clam is the issue there, and we've done the gaping clam studies, and that's been showing minimal impact, but that does not, and don't get me wrong, it does not mean that that gets you away from having to mitigate for these types of programs.
Yeah, so one of the problems, one of the things that hasn't happened enough yet, you know, in our opinion, is a dialogue between the port and the citizens of Newport about, so, the port and the state of Oregon have invested heavily in this brand-new dock, taking out these, the old cargo ship, rebalancing the other one, building a new dock, this is great, right? It, it has really brought the port back to life, so now, what are we going to do with it? And what are we going to do with it that will benefit the community or, contrary-wise, could possibly tear the community and/or the bay apart? And we would certainly like to see more open, you know, heavy-working dialogue between the city and the port and the southeast Moore Road neighborhood that has some real concerns about the future use of Moore Road by a reactivated port, about what would work best for the port and for the city. It would be really helpful if that kind of dialogue could really get started, not, you know, one or two little workshops, but getting down serious and putting minds together about how to make it work.
Back to our audience again. Question, was there?
Remember the question about it, LeBron?
Oh.
If private landowners have to ship raw logs out of this county and to the port, then I can't refuse this.
So, why would we pass, why wouldn't we pass a short hall to haul the, haul it, haul the large calls to Portland? I'm not sure I understand the question, Rio, do you understand this question?
They might, might be loading the ships only partially, or they have to finish it.
So, do you understand that question, you wanna, do you wanna speak to it?
And I, what he's trying to say is that, if the small timber landowner, such as himself, not incorporated by the way, has to, has to export, or has to sell the timber, right, the logging timber, he's gonna, he's gonna have two choices. Can I log it, ship it, twenty miles to the port of Newport, create jobs in my community, create revenue for my port, and export those logs to whoever buys them? Or, should I export them to whoever buys them, put them on a truck, send them several hundred miles down the road to another port that's gonna make the benefits, gonna make the revenue, gonna create the jobs? And yet, so my timberland basically does no good for my community, and so, plus, it creates a much larger fossil fuel imprint, because the truck, instead of driving twenty miles to an export in Newport, now it's driving a hundred miles in either direction to the port of Astoria or the port of Tufay, or probably, more likely, to the port of Longview, Washington, which does a lot of exporting, so worrying. So, the state of Oregon does that, so I think what he's...
What we're, what we're hearing is that these, these, the smaller private timber folks at this point in time don't have a market, and there are, there are impacts, both environmental and economically to the community by sending those elsewhere. That, that's, that's what I'm hearing, so. Question, yes?
Yes, we, it seems like we're talking here about impact on land, but we haven't talked about impact on the ocean, and maybe somebody can speak about the footprint that these ships leave, from Asia all the way to China with the log.
So, the question was, and I'm not sure if we do have anybody here prepared to speak to that, but the question wasn't, and certainly a good question, is, what is the impact of the ocean? We're, we're seeing this within our narrow frame of the port, maybe, and I think the, the question raises, what is the larger going across?
I can talk about at least the impacts to Yucuna Bay from the ships, not the ocean as a whole.
I think she was speaking to the ocean, I think we've spent ample time discussing...
Because there's ballast water issues in Yucuna Bay from, from those ships.
I'm not speaking about that, okay? I'm talking about fossil fuels being used on the truck as compared to fossil fuels being used all the way across the ocean each time.
Okay, so we're talking about the difference between fossil fuels hauling logs to Portland versus sending them on a boat overseas. Is anybody...
Shipping has the least, least carbon footprint by sea for any other transportation method in the world.
Yeah, I, I can't, if there's other people that can qualify that statement, I, I believe what he says, but I think that's, that's, that's answering your asking.
Also, keep in mind, a lot of these ships, whether it's recovered wastepaper, whatever they're hauling, they're coming here from China, and they're going back. They're either going back loaded, or half-full, or empty. I mean, they're, you know, so, his point's exactly right, there's been a number of studies, people will focus on the footprint of the ships, it's absolutely minimal of any shipping of anything going on, so.
And just really quickly, I just would wanna add that, you know, that's not where the environmental damage is done through the shipping, it's once those logs get there, and there's very low environmental standards for processing those logs that you really can push.
Yes.
So, I have a question for our trade experts, and that is, that Oregon, Washington primarily export logs, and also export some lumber, but primarily logs. Canada primarily exports lumber to the Asian markets, and then also exports some logs that are much smaller in number. My understanding is that part of the reason for that is that Canada, it's not a ban on log export, but they make it difficult to export logs, and so, I'm just curious, how is that not a violation of NAFTA? How, how does, because it's also difficult to export logs from Canada into the United States, and I'm just sort of curious how Canada's approach to this fits within the bigger free trade agreement context, I guess.
Canada has a law that's a preference, that whatever the market value of logs, that those log, the mills and the businesses in Canada have a preference to buy those logs that are reduced... buy those logs that are reduced cost, highly, so it's subsidized. It has, with the best of our knowledge, withstood any trade complaints that have gone on. But, again, quick, with, for instance, any previous trade agreement, it will be in the Trans-Pacific Partnership. Give you a quick example. The company in Canada made MTBE, a fuel additive, that improves gas mileage. A company, or a California state passed a law that you cannot use MTBE in California. The Canadian corporation sued the U.S. in a secret court. The only way we know about it is one of the congressmen let us know. And the Canadian company won in the suit. The U.S. had to pay them a lot of money. Hardly anybody in the United States knows that. So, on some of these trade agreements, on regulation, I mentioned, you know, Russia just sent, set a high tariff on their lumber to make it economically feasible for, sorry, not lumber, logs, to make it economically feasible to mill them in their country. That's what we support. Again, you know, we need ports, we need everything, you know, from the longshore, they said, you gotta have a port structure. They have tourism, everything that's there. It's just we need economic policies that promote manufacturing of products, and we have jobs here, and we have the good tax base. But that's how they...
And to your knowledge, Canada's preference, however exactly that works, that has withstood any sort of trade law challenge?
Yes. It was in part of the U.S. Softwood Trade Agreement that took, that was negotiated, was in place for a long time, then didn't get renewed, and it took a while to get it renewed. To the best of our knowledge, well, I know it has, because it's still there, it has been, there's been trade suits that it's withstood on. I believe it's because it was done through the Softwood Trade Agreement, and the U.S. and Canada worked together on it, and they had a lot of clout on the three panel judge?
Other questions? All right, so we'll open it back up again for comments. Before we go any further, just by a show hand, how many people believe that the port of Newport is extremely valuable and important to this community? All right, we have a baseline for agreement right now, and I'd just like to point that out. I think that's been reiterated over and over again by different speakers here, and I think that what we've heard from the port this evening, whether we want to hear it or not, is that we're up against a deficit of funding to keep the infrastructure alive there. And it is up to us as a community to figure out what are the solutions to keep that port in the integrity that we want. And it is up to us as a community to work with the port and with our other fellow longshoremen, the timber industry, the fishing community, the tourism industry, to find the right solutions for moving forward. We're not gonna fix this in different camps. So, I'd like to open that back up, just with that little notion, before we start comments again for more comments. So, I saw your hand first.
Yeah, anybody who might know, I don't know about this myself. I've heard bits of rumors back and forth, but can anyone speak to the possibility of those big tourist cruise ships coming in? You know, like, whatever, you quote, like, Carnival or whatever.
You can't have the bridges too low.
Yeah, I think the bridge is too low. There's been discussion of pocket cruisers coming in. I would like to limit this evening's town hall to one topic only, and I'm sure there will be other opportunities if that comes up again. The short answer is no, no big boats, I don't think.
Now, this is your port. This is not a privately owned port. It is owned by the district legislature. Come to our meetings. We have regular meetings. The last Tuesday, the port's meeting, every month is at the same time. We want you down there. We always have a public conference here. However, we get always feedback through the port of Newport. We represent you. And I have to tell you, when I ran the port, I had no idea what was on the horizon of the port of Newport. I thought I was gonna go and sit in a chair and, you know, make things, but then we had been a most phenomenal experience. So, the other moral here is serving local government, it can be so rewarding. It's challenging. It will make you think about things, you never follow it up. But, you know, serve your community, serve your family by serving in local government is a tremendously rewarding experience.
Take your local government people out for beer.
Which is okay personally, until you've done it too many times, and then you have to file as a lobbyist. Question or comment, yes?
I've got a question, basically, before answering, is the dredging situation. We've been dredging for years and years and years, and everything is okay, right? But now we have to dredge deeper just because these log boats come in. Is that true or not true?
Does someone want to speak to that, or is someone able to speak to that? Is that true?
Well, I can say something, yes.
Look, I saw the longshoreman's hand first there, so I'm gonna allow him to speak, and then I saw a couple more there go up, so...
The thing is, I mean, if you're talking about where the issue comes at the international terminal itself, that is the dredging campaign permit that the port is currently applying for. Basically, what that arose from was moving the face of the dock back, creating more marine estuary. The ship sizes that we call here are handymapped ships. Those ships have called here before. So, this dredging and dredging and dredging that she's talking about, maintaining our channel, has been done for decades. The problem is, it's not done right now, because the port wants a lot of the dredging dollars due to the lack of commerce, because there was no shipping going in and out of it. And also affects the bar net. We were talking earlier about NOAA. NOAA ships do not draft the same amount as a cargo ship does. A cargo ship drafts approximately thirty-four, thirty-five feet, pulls those. A NOAA ship, commercial fishing boats, those kind of things are substantially less. The core will look at that and say, we don't need to draft, we don't need to dredge the bar any longer than forty feet, we can get by over thirty feet. What's that do to the bar and the passage for our fishermen, that they're going to sea and bring us back food? It makes it substantially less safe, because the framework won't be bigger, there'll be less passage to it, and it will adversely affect the passage over our bar. So, in answer to, do we have to dredge this deeper now because of the ships coming here? We have to redredge it deeper now because of the ships coming here. But history has it being that deep for decades. And so, the only thing that's really changing is the footprint at the international terminal because of the reconfiguration of the rebuild of the dock. Maybe the port commissioners can strike me out, but I think I'm on target on this. You know, the channel depth is all gonna be no deeper than what has ever been historically authorized by the farming board in the state of Newport, and it does by that. The jetties haven't been maintained. When was the last time we've seen any maintenance going on on the jetties, either south or north of the state? We haven't. Why? No economy. The core looks at it and goes, after you still get across it, we're good. And so, that's what's going on, that's what the core does. But as far as dredging our bay from the channel all the way up to the ship terminal, way deeper and wiping out an estuary that we've never done before, because of this project, that's simply not true. That's not the fact list.
David, did you want to speak at all of that, or did he cover?
Covered.
Okay.
Because when we pulled the paisley out, the paisley was actually deeper than what the dredge area was in front of, where the dock used to be. What we ended up with, when the paisley came out, yeah, we ended up with a dip pool there. We freighted, we mitigated, we added some central fish habitat, deep water habitat. Wonderful thing, we did that, hadn't we? But what happened was, is he really pressed up so close to the face of the dock, so when the paisley came out, we ended up with a hump in progress. So, yeah, we need to do some dredging. And, like I said, we are studying. We are not going to dredge. But, you know, Cameron covered it quite well, too, is that we have to face the mitigation, which is very difficult in a highly developed estuary like Yaquena Bay. Yaquena Bay is a highly developed estuary. We aren't Good Bay, we aren't the Lammert River, we aren't the Plumbeak River. You know, it tends to be, you can find a lot of mitigation areas like that, where you have a little steel mill, you have places where you go in, you can mitigate, and you can do your project. We're limited here, but we do have mitigation, we do. The part of Newport's meeting is the watershed, we have, this is very, you know, very instrumental in helping us on this, and we're reaching out to others, you know, looking for mitigation areas in this estuary that we can bring forward that will enhance the estuary, through a little bit of the amount of dredging that we're doing.
Okay, I have Cameron, and then Rennie, and then Rio.
You know, got that right, and I was perhaps not clear. I wish I had the picture in the core application, or the core public notice based on the port's application for expanded dredging. I have a very nice aerial photo with a red line that shows where the expanded dredging would be. And it's in a prism, not prison, but prism, around the new dock. The business about dredging the channel or dredging over the bar is completely different, it's completely separate. It's not a part of this application for dredging at all. So, concerns over that, if there are any concerns, is a completely different issue. This dredging is only for right around, in kind of like a collar around the new dock, only.
And according to that, it's not a new permit for dredging. We are asking...
Right, it's a permit modification.
We are asking for amendment or modification to a person who already possesses, which is one of the many we have to apply for. So, we're asking for amendment for a company already possessed to allow deeper dredging in the area of the dock.
Right.
Some of which is very hard to substrate. Some of it is silk, some of it is hard-packed, what is it, hard-fan?
Hard-fan. It's like a good litter.
But it is important to, remember we're talking, we're talking about dredging, all this dredging is done higher. There's dredging of the channel, dredging across the bar, and then there's this present uprider, additional dredge for what is requested.
I think, okay.
Yeah, when people were talking...
I think the answer's been, I think the question's been answered now. Yeah, I want to get it back to the audience here. Rennie, you were next. I apologize, I don't want to cut you guys off, but I think we answered that pretty well.
The point, my understanding is seventy percent of the estuary has already been filled in past practices, but, you know, no new filling is occurring on, you know, that's taking away estuaries anymore. There's ample opportunities for that seventy percent that was done, it seems to me, for future mitigations. And growing up in a longshore family, thank goodness, I probably have false teeth if I hadn't had those benefits when I was in high school. They've been shipping partial loads out of here for years for dredging issues. I remember that a lot of times the ships from here didn't full draft. There are those that have to go to Tufay or Longview to fill off.
Rio, I think you were next.
So, I know that a lot of people have seen me here, running around, passing out cards, but this is definitely just from me. This isn't from our group. I am part of the group, but this is definitely my opinion. Our group's very diverse, just like this room is, and we welcome anyone to come and experience that. And I got a couple pictures here. You know, I've been a photographer pretty much all my life, and, you know, and this one here says a lot about our town. You know, this is what our town's all about, right? It's the octopus down there at the Marine Hatfield Center that every kid sees when they're a kid, and they come, and that's what this town's about. You know, there's some other pictures here, which I'm not sure really reflect our town very well. So, what I have here is a picture of Kus Bay on the right. It's kind of small, so I'll pass it around. And I got a picture of our bay that I took today, because it was such a beautiful, nice day out there. So, here you can see the NOAA docks, we see the jetty, so there's kind of a little juxtaposition there. And I'm gonna start with that. You know, this other picture here, it's not so pretty, I'm gonna end with that. So, I came to you today as a concern to Oregon salmon and steelhead fishermen. On Sunday, a friend and I went up to the Sletz River Gorge to go fishing. What we encountered up on the top of the mountain was frightening. It was total devastation of the landscape. We drove for about forty minutes from Moonshine Park up to the top. I remarked about how little color was in the clear cuts. They looked like a gray yard, gray and lifeless. Then I remembered that clear cuts are all aerial sprayed with pesticides to keep the undergrowth down. As we drove, I realized that the timber company had cut down almost all the trees that were of age of harvest. There's nothing left up there but barren landscapes and small dug firs and tree farms. When we arrived at the fishing hole, which is below the Sletz Falls, I noticed that they cut the entire hillside above where we were fishing. Is this legal? How can we treat our prime salmon and steelhead habitat this way? My fishing buddy, who's a commercial salmon fisherman, says to me, this is why there's no salmon in the ocean to catch. Salmon is our livelihood, not just in the ocean for commercial fishermen, but the river guides, the hotels, bait shops, fuel depots, grocery stores, mom and pops, lobs in store, I could go on forever. The town of Toledo, Sletz, and Newport all get part or all of their water supply from this river. The river is being poisoned by aerial spraying and the massive amounts of silt that flow down from the clear cuts. This river is the lifeblood of our county. Why are we not protecting our fishing economy and waterways for unsustainable logging practices? Are the same anything-goes tactics going to be used to cut northwest timber that is sent to China through the Teaven Brothers facility? I'm not against logging. I grew up outside of Willamina, Oregon. I saw the good old days of logging. Old growth logs on trucks going down the road, heading to a local mill. These days, things are different. The mills are closing, people are desperate, the system is to blame. When large timber companies get subsidized by local taxpayers and state governments to ship to China, something is very wrong. Why should we pay the price so that Teaven Brothers can make a profit? What do we get out of this? And I feel for you, gentlemen, twenty jobs, which are not even guaranteed to go to our local longshoremen. That is just not enough. As Newport residents, we all pay our fair share of property taxes to the community. Our taxes will pay for their roads, the wear and tear of multiple arterial highways coming into Moore Road. You know, we lost a member of our port, and he shared with us that, you know, it could be up to two hundred trucks a day going down John Moore Road. That's if the Alcan project goes through. Fifty for Teaven, a hundred and fifty for Alcan. That's four hundred trips up and down John Moore Road. That's almost a truck every minute for six hours. Why don't the Teaven Brothers have to pay any taxes on their exporting facility? The perception is that this project will bring much-needed money to our schools and local economy. We won't see any benefit to our community from tax money accrued from Teaven Brothers' business in our town, because there will be none. Why? Well, they're gonna be leasing port property, and they do not pay property taxes on port property.
That's incorrect.
Okay, well, that's what I thought. So, so, hold on, I'm still going.
Folks, please hold your comments. We'll allow you to address anything that Rio's spoken to.
Right. Well, I got about another four paragraphs.
You've got three minutes.
Okay, so, that was at the port meeting. This is our meeting. Why should the Teaven Brothers rent the port property only be trade? Why should the rent that the Teaven Brothers pay for port property only be trade for improvements they make to the property? When our city and port are destitute of money, trying to sell buildings like the VAC to balance the budget? And this is the property they are renting to make a profit on. The reality is that we, as a community, sacrifice and contribute towards the funding of this project. The Teaven Brothers and a few handful of individuals profit. The cons outweigh the pros. I urge all of you to come together tonight. We must work with each other to fix the system. I wanted to skip this part, because it's a little inflammatory, and I was asked not to say it, so I'll skip down to here. Where is all the profit going? That's a very important question to me and I think the people in this room.
I'll ask you one more time to follow by the rules, ma'am. Thank you.
The port are elected officials, yet they don't listen to the people. They listen to out-of-town Wall Street firms that call themselves a timber management company. Where is all the profit going? It's going to Wall Street and their investors. They give us nothing except a poisoned bay, poisoned Sletz River, and a giant six-hundred-foot ship that shows up every month, loads all of our logs on it, and steals our livelihoods. Here is the picture of the Sletz. This right here- This right here is Lobston. This right here is the Alsey Falls, I mean, the Sletz Falls. This is the road I took. It wanders up here, and it comes up here, and you can see the river, because there's only the river left. There's only this hundred-foot swath on either side of the river.
Rio, I ask you to wrap this up.
That was it.
All right. There was, there was considerable amount of interest in, Rio, please hold your many applause or interest if you have. It's considerable amount of interest in some of the comments that Rio compassionately just gave, and, and I know some of you guys want to speak to that. I'm going to ask that please contain your passion a little bit and not be inflammatory about this issue. I think we can come together on this. Greg, did you first want to, did you want to speak very quickly? I do want to make sure I touch these longshoremen back here in the back of the room.
Yeah, I can. Keep in mind, I understand, appreciate your comments, keep in mind logging practices, things, they're not like they were thirty, forty years ago. And I challenge you to look this up. Since nineteen forty, the US has been growing more trees per year than it's been logging. Look it up, there's verifiable information on it. If, if we don't log and manage our forests, we will have catastrophic fires. I'm not talking about normal forest fires, scorching forest fires where the land is, it won't grow anything. It's not, you know, again, you know, I'm not from the community, but I know you're looking at it from the community point, but you also have to look around and see the total impact of what's there. Again, I'll refocus back to, it's the federal government, the trade agreements, and the things you want to reduce logging. You've got to get involved on changing our economic policies and our trade policies. We need logging. Go to Colorado, go to somewhere where they just had catastrophic fires, horrible, releases the carbon CO2 emissions. Talk to me about that later, if you like.
How many people in this room agree that we need logging to some level or degree? Okay, we've got ports, and we've got logging, we've got two things that I found. I think how we get to the solutions of the port and how we get to the solutions of timber are, are the questions that we face today. And so I'm going to turn this, I want to give the, the folks in the back of the room here an opportunity. Did you want to speak to, to Rio's comments?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to him. And I, you know, I see that, and I wish he would direct it to a more positive, you know, I mean this in a full respect. Because I know the guy is intelligent, and I know he can bring a lot of good conversation with this thing, and maybe even help us find a resolution for what some of the problems are. I'd like to answer some of the questions. What do we get? We're getting jobs. Everybody keeps saying twenty jobs. Like I said, look up OSU Tech, look up, look up their effects from nineteen ninety-one. One point three jobs per million feet of timber. Teaven Brothers, leaving Alcan out of it, Teaven Brothers is estimating somewhere around sixty million feet a year. That's somewhere around eighty jobs. Jobs created around shipping are not minimum wage jobs. They are family wage, family-supporting jobs that, that are very good in this community. For the first time since nineteen eighty-eight, around a prospective log shipper, we just got done having a drawing for twenty-four new casual longshoremen. That's how we work. There's a gentleman here at SSA, he can explain to you. We don't register union longshoremen until we have work to justify them. We, we step up, if you started a casual workforce, that's a part-time workforce. Then, when our work comes into our port, it is guaranteed to us, because the work that comes here, they look at our command hours in our port, and they say, "You need more longshoremen in Newport, Oregon." So those casual longshoremen that we just put on get moved up to registered longshoremen, which make more money, which have better benefits, that bring up money back to our community. So that's one thing we did. Teaven Brothers will pay taxes. Teaven Brothers, their, their system development fees alone is close to two hundred thousand dollars to maintain. It's going to go toward street maintenance and sewer line maintenance. So they, you know, raising his hands, but that's a fact.
It's not, it's a hundred thousand dollars.
Huh?
It's a hundred thousand dollars.
No, no. A hundred ninety dollars, they never had it reduced. Check with the city, there is a hundred ninety grand. So anyway, also, when the, when they lease a piece of ground, they are now responsible to insure it, to pay taxes on it. David James runs for the Port of Newport. Hey, Dave, you pay taxes on that property now.
Yeah, let's hear about that, can you explain a little bit about that?
When, when it comes off the tax rule, a port piece of property that's owned and operated by the port, the International Terminal, he's operating that, that is not on the tax rule, because one, one public identity cannot tax another identity. But if I go down to the International Terminal, I go to Port of Newport, and I say, "Hey, Joan and Dave, I want to lease two acres down there." Guess what? There's a marine school that leases ground from Port of Newport. Hey, Dave, you gotta pay taxes. So, so, so there's a lot of developments on port property, that's what the port does.
So can I clarify? I think that there was some misunderstanding about taxation on timberland versus taxation within the community and the port.
The port's responsible is, it's for them to take their resources, their docks, their properties, their everything, and to do the best they can in our community with it. And that means, lease it to somebody that puts it on the tax rule, you bet that another paying taxes. Oh, and it's even better, if that person that leases that property is going to put people to work. Oh, we're going to create twenty-five family jobs. Hey, that's good for us to do, because you know what? I used to go to the Marketo. I used to go to the Marketo for lunch. You know where you go to the Marketo, you go to the Marketo for lunch during the winter time, there's no tourists around? They're closed. You know why? Because all the payrolls, the paychecks, you used to be able to go there, it used to be a thriving restaurant, aren't here anymore. They can't keep it open because there's no tourists, because they don't come here. One of the, one of the Chamber of Commerce used to advertise, seriously, the Chamber of Commerce, they used to advertise, "Come to Newport and watch the ships coming." They used to tell the people in the valley when we were having a shift, so they could come and watch them go, and they brought them in the winter time. Guess what? It was an advertising campaign by the Chamber of Commerce to have people come here and, and watch the ships. And I guarantee it will work. I defy you to find a perfect place between State Park to the International Terminal and ship them. You can't, because people come here, they like to see it, they like to watch it. It's something they can't see up close and personal in any other place. So it's going to benefit. The jobs that are going, the money that's going to be here is going to be put back in our community. Teaven Brothers has given their order. We have, we can't be wrong here. Teaven Brothers has given their word, that they're going to hire their yard workers from this community. They're going to bring in a manager, and they're going to put people from here to work, which is going to put us to work, which are going to put our new casuals to work, which are going to create more ones for them. They're going to buy a house, and you know what? They're going to pay taxes. So, it's a, it's a snowball in the right direction. The Port of Newport is doing the exact thing that is mandated by them by law to do, is do the economic best with their resources for the community. We need that fishing industry. We need sport fishing. You know what? And the Port of Newport is responsible for maintaining the facilities that supports them. Joanne Barton, the president of the Port Commission, just sat here tonight and said they don't have the resources to maintain them. What's going to happen to those industries if the Port of Newport doesn't have any resources? That's what we're going to get.
All right, so, David, I saw your hand-
I just, I just want to touch on something. You know, it always comes to salmon sometimes, or stream activity, ocean productivity, you know? And sometimes it doesn't have anything to do with logging, but, you know, I spent three years working on a central fish habitat when I came in. You know, and sometimes I think, you know, I would really like to go back to my youth in the community, before the Marketo, before the landing, you know? You could see the bay, you know, you could dig cans, you know? Yeah, but it's great, you know something? If we look back and we were still that way today, there would be no Magnus and Steen Act, there'd be no essential fish habitat, there'd be no endangered species act, and this would be a desultory area. So where we've come to the path of where we are today, I have seen some of the most particular equations in the last few years that I've seen in years and years and years. It has to do with stream enhancement, it has to do with central fishing. It has to do with everything we've done, and this goes right into view with the future dredging of Port of Newport and the community. It's about responsibility, and it's about the right. We aren't trying to hide anything, we have open public meetings, please, but it is clearly about responsibility, and the same way we treat our neighbors.
Yes, sir.
I have a question that has to do with logging and how logging is done. It's, the harmful part of logging is strip logging. And I would like to, in all possible, for Martin to- To explain to us, he sounds a lot about sustainable logging, and what I wanted was for him to explain.
Well, I think that's something that maybe we can capture for future discussion possibly, or topics of interest, is what, what are these practices that we're talking about? And when we talk about Teaven Brothers, who is this company that we're talking about? And what are, are they logging sustainable? Is, is it having impacts? These are questions that I think we're having that are raised, and I don't think this is the venue, nor there is the expertise in this room to, to, to really speak to that. Did, did you have more?
I have another question that is about Teaven Brothers. My understanding is that Teaven Brothers' jobs are going to be mostly outsourced, they come from somewhere else. Other than limited number of people that are going to work loading ships.
This is what I'm hearing too. We've, we've thrown Teaven Brothers' name around a lot. I would like to have this type of a discussion with Teaven Brothers in the room. If we want to get answers from Teaven Brothers, then Teaven Brothers needs to be here. And I don't know, is there anybody from Teaven Brothers here?
The Teaven Brothers has been at, I believe, three port public hearings. They have testified on record that they will hire local-
This is why I was asked to be the moderator, because I'm totally blind.
Just come here. Some do.
They have, they have testified on record that they plan to hire locally. Tracy and I met with Sean Teaven, the sole proprietor of Teaven Brothers, before they ever even talked to the Port of Newport. We heard their name in the wind, and we went and met with them, and said, "Look, here's the deal. You're coming to our community, you're going to put back into our community, you are going to create jobs in our community." And he says, "I tell you what, that's what I'm about. I put back in my community." He, he has his own rock and paving company. He could go down there and build his own log yard. He was, he has no plans to do that. He plans on hiring a local rock supplier, local contractors to put in storm drains, to build the log yard, to pave it, to do everything. He wants to put as much money and create as many jobs in Newport and Beach. Parker and a friend in Newport, I don't like speaking for Sean Teaven, I don't like speaking for Eric Loin from, from Teaven Brothers, but I've heard him say this over and over, the Port of Newport, their commissioners can back me up on this. They've said it over and over, on record, that they plan on being a part of this community, they plan on giving back to this community, and they plan on creating as many jobs as they possibly can in this community. And I want to clarify, throw up one other misconception. Teaven Brothers is not going to be the logging operation. Teaven Brothers' job will be to run the export operation, and that's it. That's the Portland Department, that's who they're going to, that's who they've vetted, and they like them coming here too. We've done research on Teaven Brothers. They're on a Brownsfield plot site in Rainier, Oregon, that they've completely cleaned up and put back to work by the community. It was basically worthless. They have over three hundred employees now. So, Teaven Brothers is extremely responsible. We've talked to other communities that they're from, they give back, they donate to our sports teams, they, they give to food banks, and they've given us, they're all going to be just as upset as everybody in this room if they don't hire local people, because they, me personally, Sean Teaven, Eric Loin, everybody that works for them, they give me a personal report guarantee that they're going to hire local people. And we, we vet them on what they pay. They pay good, they have retirement benefits, they have medical benefits. So anybody looking for a job, I urge you, when they get ready, open their log yard to go for.
So, I'm going to give Greg the opportunity to speak here really quickly, and then, I want to, you had your hand up, did you, did you have a comment or question? Okay, we'll, we'll get to you in just, just a second, I'll let Greg speak first.
I, I was just going to give you a bad time, but also be serious. You know what happened with the grain elevator in the Long Beach terminal? Get it in writing, make sure the port commissioners, and I'll leave it at that.
And I think that's an opportunity for these groups to come together.
I got to give you a bad time.
Yes, ma'am, you've been very patient. So, did you, did you have a question or comment?
You said that the port has been moving, I mean, going down chill for the past fifteen, twenty years, the docks have all collapsed, right? Okay, if you answer the question. Seven years ago, we had one of the largest fishing cities of the coast. The port made it the dominant area in the port. Where did heck all money go? It ain't going to the docks, it ain't going to the port. Where'd it go?
Now, now, that's part of the larger point that I was trying to make. The port operates like Marina's Palace. We provide services just like the city provides services. There are services we provide that people pick for, just like pick-up water, sewer, etc.
They pay the dock's department, they don't have it, they never get it.
Do you want me to try to explain this to you? Because I really don't want to argue with you in writing. So the fact is that the more rates that we charge, when we not charge as soon, don't bring enough money in to Newport to adequately maintain the stocks in the very harsh conditions of Rainier, Oregon. If you are a character person, you're unlikely to say the docks are urged, and encouraged by the Newport and the Concord. This is, you know, I know that twenty jobs or twenty-five jobs may not sound like a lot of jobs in a community, maybe you're ten thousand people, but this is, again, the larger point that I was trying to make. It's about jobs, but it's also about having a port that can continue to service the mission fleet, and can continue to service the commercial, and the recreation, and to the repairs, to the infrastructure that has been deferred for, well, over a decade, over two decades. And, you know, I think it's important to try and come together on any sort of beginning, and not use meetings like this as, you know, trying to find someone to demonize. I think it's important to try to recognize where we have a limit, to recognize where we need to make improvements, where we need to enhance dialogue. And I'm sorry that you're angry, I really am. But I, you know, please have a thought. Talk to me, just talk to me. Tell me what your issue is, show me what you're talking about.
Over, right back. Again, the point, like we did, you got to give it up. And you do what? Over, you're trying to right it on the top. There you go.
And could you and me, we're talking about the project, I'm happy to idea all the time.
All right, so we had, we had another question in the, in the back there, Jersey?
Yeah, and when you were looking for questions, I was impressed at how few people had questions. What it said to me is that most of the people who came to this meeting still have a pretty open mind about things, and came, perhaps like I did, with your information. And so in this spirit, where people have participated, provided information, I'm grateful to ask. And I think a lot of people here in this community are very open-minded and are respectful of one another. So, I want to thank you for sharing this tonight.
I, I am not responsible for this, I got suckered in at the last moment, so we did the best we could. I, I too think that there's a lot of meaningful dialogue, and there's, there is a path forward. You know, we heard from a lot of folks this evening that were opposed to this, to this log export terminal. And, from, from some of those that weren't opposed, but were giving tools and resources for, so to speak, monkey wrenching that process. Sometimes we're talking about larger issues, like free trade agreements and issues like that. At other times, we're talking about very small scale and things like local environmental impact. I think that, that what was passed around from the port is a really sobering thing that we need to address as a community, is that if we are going to solve the problems of that port, we have to, we have to bring alternative solutions to the table. And this is what they brought to the table. They brought this logging export terminal, like it or not, they brought this to the community as an option to get you the services that you demand in this community. So, our, our passions and our engagement in these issues are the way to get out of them. We have to, we have to be actively involved, we have to actively give and engage. And I thank everybody for coming out this evening and being a part of this, and I hope that you will engage in further constructive dialogue. I'm happy to provide facilitation and moderation in the future, if folks want to get back together, want to get together. I think some of the discussion I heard from the longshoremen has been fantastic, actually. It's, it was great that you guys showed up and brought some perspective in here. Um, it's, it was great that you guys showed up and brought some perspective in here. I think that the dialogue, like you mentioned before, can, can, can go on.
If I could put another, although you look a fifty degrees available, we will participate in any comment, any decent conversation that anybody wants to have about options, about what we can do to mitigate, that kind of thing. We are here, it's our community too. The majority of us have lived here and grown up here, and we're this by, like I said. I went to Yvonne's school, went to Bud's school. So, we are always available. I know for a fact we're extremely available. They are there on time. Joanne Barton made an error tonight. She said they have their port pool on the fourth Thursday, or fourth Tuesday of every month, except for November, December. They will be on the third. She didn't tell you that. So if you're trying to, if it's not November, December, you gotta go on the third too.
All right, so.
So, we are available. Please contact us if you wanna have dialogue and conversation. The, the people that live on the hill, same kind of thing. We've had that word from Teaven Brothers. They're extremely willing to meet and talk to people, so if there's anything we can do to help set up dialogue, we're here. We're part of this community too. We want to be a part of this community. We're on a health.
And Bill, did you, did you want to provide any closing comments?
I didn't have anything planned, but of course we want to thank the speakers for coming.
Yeah, I think, thank you all for the speakers, um, who've come out this evening, shared your knowledge. It sounds like there will be more workshops and probably further interest in this issue, so.
Thank you, everybody.